I pledge allegiance to the United States.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's open up our work session on February 2nd. And it is now 6:12 minutes from the January 19th meeting. Anybody have any questions on those minutes?
No questions.
All righty. All right, next for item, questions on the February 9th 21 board agenda. I happen to have a couple of questions, it just, and it's again, I'm not just familiar with the people over here, Lisa, maybe you can help me. Under item seven, and it's B, and this is now the approved for the voting, Liera Sorano.
Lira.
Lira.
Lira Sorano.
And the next person on the, I'm not familiar with those names at all. How do they, how do people apply for that? And you know, how do we go about selecting those people?
All right, let me actually, hmm, need to pull my agenda up, I apologize. Let me just go to my email. They actually, Tina posts for them. These are for poll workers. What, what is the item Dom? Cause I have to pull mine.
Item, it's seven, and it's seven B, section one.
Okay.
Really, it's just about how, how we went about, I'm unfamiliar with how we go about selecting people for that position. So it's post a position, and then anybody from the school district, are they outside the district or in the community? How do we come about getting that post out? How's that work?
I believe that Tina uses people, let me just pull it up. People that she had from previous years and, um, let me just see. My point, Board of Registration, preparing for school elections. Yeah, so she uses, Lira is bilingual and so is Narada. Narada Amaya Moran is the new clerical that we just hired last month. And so both of those are bilingual and they, we are required now to have bilingual individuals for this role. And then Teresa Garcia is a clerical and so is Barbara Winters. So these are all internal people.
Yep, that's what's familiar, okay, thank you. And then on section two of that one, a special registration shall be conducted to take place at Rain Avenue and Center Avenue. I'm just trying to figure out how that, you know, why are we doing something special this year?
Nope, this is, this is something that we, we normally do.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay, we just call it special. And then on the bottom of the page there, three, under eight, approval of CSC recommendations. I thought I saw some CSC recommendations come through on this one.
Oh yeah, there's no CPSC recommendations.
Got it.
No preschool.
Yep, okay, great. And that's it for me, thank you. Anybody else, any questions on the agenda?
No.
Beautiful, so let's move along. As for the discussion tonight, our first item up is the athletic update from Mr. Both. Thank you, Mr. Both, for being here. You muted that day.
Excellent, thank you for having me. Do you mind if I share my screen?
That'd be great, thank you.
Still blank screen. Loading right now.
Yeah.
Excellent, again, so thank you all for having me today. Just wanted to give you an update on where we are with our athletics program and give you a look ahead to our fall and spring as well. So put it together, presentation to go over some of our procedures and some of the guidelines that have been outlined by the Department of Health and that we will be following, starting tomorrow. We were, of course, hoping to start on Monday, but mother nature had other plans. So, so here's our return to play for our winter athletics. So again, information that you are all aware, you know, Friday, January 22nd, Governor Andrew Cuomo, he approved sports classified as high risk to begin with the approval from the local health department. And then last Wednesday, January 27th, right down at Bay Park, County Executive Laura Curran and the Nassau County Department of Health approved and provided guidance for the resumption of high-risk sports. And those are the sports that you see below, that will go between winter, fall, and spring season. The Nassau County Department of Health is leaning on the New York State Department of Health, which is, you know, something that we are all very familiar with. So we felt very comfortable with their recommendation. So we're going to go through some of the procedures that we are going to follow with this winter season. We're going to continually evaluate them. These are based on the New York State Department of Health, so many of them won't be adjusted. And then we'll roll into the fall season, which is scheduled to start on March 1. And here you have it, just a reminder of how our seasons will look. Our junior high winter one season, which has already passed, will not run this year. For us, that impacts girls' middle school volleyball and boys' middle school basketball. Winter two season will run for middle school, and that will start Monday, February 8th, with girls' middle school basketball. And then, of course, you can see the high school seasons right there. It's a quick turnaround from season to season, but again, with the main goal of providing the students opportunities, this certainly fits that bill. Here's the pre-workout screenings that we will be following, and this is based on recommendations from council, as well as the Department of Health guidelines that they put forth. Parents and guardians will be requested to screen their child for symptoms of COVID-19. We, on-site screening will include daily temperature checks that will be conducted by our athletic trainer and/or coaches. Again, the winter season being a smaller number of students, we will have the opportunity to rely on our athletic trainer for that, but our coaches will also be available and trained in doing that. Of course, any person positive symptoms, they should not be practicing. So we will not have students be required to test for COVID-19. As you know, many schools, Suffolk County is a requirement, and a number of schools through Nassau County are requiring testing, but there are also a number that are not. So, you know, the recommendation would be that we do not conduct the weekly testing. However, I know Superintendent Reeves is looking into providing optional testing for all students and staff within the school district.
Yeah, if I could just speak for a moment about that, and we'll talk more about COVID testing later, I am aware that a colleague of mine, a good friend of mine is a superintendent in Suffolk, and they received hundreds of tests the other day from, I guess, the Department of Health and through facilitation with BOSI's. A lot of districts are testing in Nassau County, some are not. It's, it's kind of not consistent. We would like to offer it as optional, but it's going to really depend on the availability of the tests that we have, because David said it's not required, and so nobody will be providing tests for us. We did get 240 tests from the Department of Health last week, and we do want to use some of those for surveillance testing for faculty and, you know, in certain situations. But we will, we do have two companies set up that will be coming on campus. So we'll have to see how that goes, and it will really be pending the availability of testing.
Perfect. A face mask, and this is a question that does come up often, and this is the language that is put in the New York State Department of Health, but basically, coaches, staff, students, they will be required to wear their face masks when they're walking around the athletic facility, when they're on the bench, when they're not participating in physical activity. They will be required to wear it while playing unless they are unable to tolerate it. So that will, that's a student's choice, that's a personal choice of the student. And again, that is based on the New York State guidance, as well as the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. You know, student, if they're unable to tolerate using the face mask while playing basketball or wrestling, they do have the option to take the mask off. But again, once they were to leave the game, they would be required to put it back on. And we will have plenty of disposable face masks for students, just in case they need them. Transportation, again, this will be district policy as far as one person per seat, unless they live in the same household, windows will try to be open, nobody will be seated directly behind the driver, mask will be on at all times and assigned seats for every ride. As opposed to past, our JV and varsity basketball teams will travel on separate buses, and they will leave immediately following their game. Just some additional four-hour fall and spring season, which is the Malvern shuttle bus. That really goes up and down throughout the afternoons, bringing our soccer, lacrosse teams, tennis athletes to Malvern. We will have an additional shuttle bus, and in order to provide students a ride up to Malvern. And that's based on the anticipated number of athletes. We don't know the number of athletes who will end up coming out for the fall season starting on March 1, and of course, the spring season in April 22nd. But we're anticipating approximately 40 students, which would require that second bus. We will offer parents the opportunity to transport their child to Malvern for practices and home games. Again, to allow the parents the opportunity to drive their children there if they don't feel comfortable with them on the bus on a daily basis, and of course, maybe to alleviate some of the needs for the bus. So that is how we are handling the Malvern shuttle bus as of now, but that will also be determining, based on number of athletes that we have. Student expectations, I won't go through all these, these are a lot that we've heard thus far, but again, we're really trying to limit the amount of contact they have. Students will certainly be asked not to attend or host a traditional team gatherings. We have a lot of great traditions within our teams, and we're looking for ways to continue those, continuing in a safe way. Recommendation, avoid carpooling unless absolutely necessary, and mask can be worn at all times and windows open. Similar for the parent expectations, really help support the students in refraining from attending those social and large gatherings, because as we see in other districts, when that happens, there are certainly outbreaks, and we want to really avoid that. And of course, avoid carpooling as well. And the coaches' expectations, and these expectations have been in effect since the intermeals have started. Our coaches have done a fantastic job in working with this. We are encouraging, and coaches are really going to work on having the students practice in cohorts, practice in smaller groups, and then come together for culminating activities at the end when possible. All of our coaches will or have completed the NFHS COVID for administration and coaches course, just as another layer of knowledge, and again, from the experts to keep our students safe. Here are some procedures. Coaches will communicate the building entry procedures directly with their students. Building, maybe the students will not enter the building through the main entrance after 2:50. Students should not come to practice more than 15 minutes earlier, and students will be unable to remain in the building unless they have a 3 o'clock practice, or they are leaving immediately after school. So all the, all the, the entry and exit for practices and games will be from the athletic wing, you know, once 2:50 comes. Our practices and game, current practice schedules are posted and returned to play, and that is in the process of being adjusted, because we just received our game schedule yesterday, and with the final changes due Friday, so come Friday, we'll have a firm grasp on when and where we're playing, and the practice schedule will be adjusted. The practices and games, they will be open to students from each cohort, including full live and full virtual, so the students will need to be able to come back to school. And again, that's just a team aspect of it, in order to run a successful season, ensure the safety of all students, we do need all students together. So when we talk about practicing in cohorts, we will, student coaches will work to make sure that they are practicing in cohorts to the best of their ability, because we will have all students in the gymnasium at, for one team at the same time. And of course, the coaches will continue to keep accurate records of who's there, just in case contact tracing is required. Equipment and cleaning, again, something that has been spoken about often, we have, we'll have plenty of hand sanitizer for students, coaches will be required to use it when they enter and exit the gym, similar to what we do in phys ed and intramurals at this point. And Jim can speak more about this if needed, but you know, we already have plans in place to disinfect the gymnasium in between games, after games, before games, to ensure that, you know, students aren't sharing equipment or equipment's properly disinfected. Our basketball and volleyball teams will be required to bring their own practice balls to away games for warm-up activities. Bench area seating will look a lot different than in years past, but they will all be, based on the Department of Health guidelines, it will all be six feet apart, and we will be extending into the bleachers on both sides, because this includes also for basketball and volleyball, our timekeepers. So we will be having our students and staff spread out throughout the gym, and of course, as I said earlier, masks will be on at all times. And if you have any questions on any of this, please stop me. A few more procedures that we're going to go through, if I can clarify anything on the spot, please let me know. Here is our hydration plan. Again, we always encourage students to be mindful of having enough fluid, and we want to continue that, but we need to do it in a safe way. So all students will be required to have their own labeled water bottles. The water fountains are closed in the hallway, however, the refilling stations are there, and the water jugs that are typically behind the bench in basketball will not be there. So again, we've done this in intramurals, and the students have been fantastic with it, and it'll be pretty seamless. Our locker rooms and restrooms. So we've gotten through, similar thing, we've gotten through the fall intramurals and the winter intramurals thus far without using our locker rooms at all. We don't anticipate a big use of the locker rooms, especially for this winter season, because again, it's only the students who are live in school and have a 3 o'clock practice, which is typically middle school students, which is a small, a smaller number. So if absolutely necessary, we will allow students to use the locker room for changing purposes only, and a coach will be there to let them in. There's going to be mark stations for them to change. And again, when we looked at the numbers, it's a small number of students, and they might, it might even be non-existent, because we've gotten through the intramurals thus far. Some students do change in the single-use bathroom across from the small gym, and we can, we'll continue to do that. But what we found is when more than one or two students needed to change, there was a buildup outside of that bathroom. So we're trying to eliminate that. Nobody will have lots of lockers, and everything will be brought out with them as they come. These are the signage that will be around the gym, again, as per New York State guidelines, we already have plenty of the signage around, but we made some more specific for, you know, for athletics, and these will be put up around the gym to continue to encourage people. We're very excited about our live streaming for our winter season. And as you all may be aware, we have the NFHS network, and for the remainder of this school year, all athletic events filmed inside the large gym from junior high to varsity will be streamed live and for free to anybody who would like to watch them. So really excited about that, no subscription necessary. You know, it's really a great opportunity to watch it from the tablet, from the computer, for parents who can't get there, or if there are spectator limitations. And we're really excited about this opportunity. We have another camera for the football field as well, but of course, the excitement of the field being under construction, you know, we won't be able to use that for this year, but we do have another camera that will be situated on our football multipurpose field next year. And then indoor sports spectators, this is something I wanted to bring to the board, you know, for, for some discussion and see some input. Here are the guidance from the, from New York State Department of Health. There will be no spectators at away games, so you know, the opportunity to see games will be only at home games. And as you are all aware, our gym space with the number of athletes that we have can be tight at times. So indoor sports spectators, we're currently evaluating what is really the best option. I've had a discussion with the coaching, the winter coaching staff, and there's some concern regarding where, where spectators would be able to sit, and just how many spectators we would be able to have. Again, our student athletes with the bleachers pulled out, we will have varsity boys' basketball, which is typically the largest roster. We have about 15 athletes, and that includes roster reductions after tryouts. So we have about 15 athletes, typically two coaches. That brings the athletes up into the bleachers. So depending on the number of athletes that they end up having, we may have room based on the six-feet distance for up to six couples or nine individuals on the top row. But with that, they would be within six to seven feet, they would meet the guidelines, but it would be close. So there was some concern brought up, if a spectator did, was diagnosed with a positive as COVID-19, and they were within six feet, maybe seven feet away, are we going to put a student in harm's way and derail the season before it really got off? So this is something I want to bring the information to you and let you know. I wouldn't feel comfortable putting our spectators on the visitor side, so it would really only be, as you see in the picture here, on the rock side. And as I said, it is a limited number of spectators at best case scenario.
The, the other issue that came up as well, if I can, David, we discussed, was contact tracing. You know, we obviously are responsible for contact tracing when there's a positive case. If there is a positive case of a spectator, we've not really had any, you know, we've not opened our schools to any events up until now, except for the board meeting. And those are so small in number and really spread out, but if someone were to test positive, then we would, we would have a really hard time to contact trace where those people were seated. You know, there's not assigned seats like there are in classrooms, and you know, the teachers are aware of where the kids are sitting, and so who's, who was close by? So you know, those are a couple of other considerations.
You can have a sign-in sheet for whoever.
Yes, we would be, we would be having people, we have to have people fill out the health screener. That will be actually a QR code that's now up and running rightly. We have the, for, we were talking about how we would manage that, but of course, you know, yeah, we would know who's there, but then we would have to rely on them telling us, and then who were they, who were they near? Because obviously, if you're seated for a game, you're there for more than 10 minutes.
I honestly think we're all opening up a can of worms if we let spectators in. I mean, sports is about the kids, we're finally allowing them to play again. Now we're going to bring other people into the gym and possibly, God forbid, one person has it, then, like Mr. Both says, we're derailing the whole season. If there was no way to see it, I'd say, you know what, okay, but we're live streaming. Outdoor sports may be a different story, but I don't see any, you know, any reason to let spectators in, personally, that's, that's my opinion. Again, it's about the kids playing, so the best opportunity to play is the least amount of people around them.
I agree with you 100%, Joe. The only thing I would think about is maybe if it's possible, and depending on the number of seniors per team, but if there is a senior night, allowing those senior parents to see their kids play one more time, I think that, that might be a nice thing, if there's room. I don't know, again, just throwing it out there, if everyone's uncomfortable with that, I completely understand that as well.
They're all going to be wearing masks anyway, right? Well, if there is spectators, they would be required to wear masks and standard protocol and everything else. So it's, it's definitely a touchy topic, but it would be nice to be able to get some people in there, at least some key parents, or, you know, as Kristin mentioned, you know, the senior parents or something like that, one last hurrah is always very good. You know, it's always an important thing for the parents and the kids, so.
Yeah, I understand. Having other parents, listen, as a parent of an athlete, I can, I'll see my kid play on, on the computer, and I'll watch the game. But I could, I could see where, you know, seniors and senior parents, they've lost so much, and they lost last year, being able to go to the next level, if it were the basketball players, just giving them that one final game, it just might be nice. But, um, but I would also say with the sport staying consistent throughout, like not just saying, well, this sport can allow it, but this sport, we have too many players, I think consistency would be key, just not to raise problems among community members.
Right, well, even, Mr. Both, correct me if I'm wrong, you said only six to nine couples could fit anyway? So how do we pick? First come, first served, or?
So we, and again, we're still evaluating, because tryouts obviously haven't started yet, but we based it on the boys' basketball varsity roster, which we felt that, as Mrs. O'Hagan said, you know, if we're going to do it for one, we want to make sure it's consistent for all, and because other teams may have smaller rosters, you know, we want to make sure it's really based on sort of the largest roster we have. So based on a 15-person roster with two coaches, I think we'd be able to get six couples, which again, would be 12 people, or nine individuals. So it all depends on how that breakdown is. I think we'll have a little more insight after tryouts this week, again, to see the number they're at. Again, we're anticipating, as usual, a larger number for our boys' basketball program, but again, things are certainly different this year, so it could be smaller.
We had discussed rotating senior parents. You know, that was something that we, we had a brief discussion about, is having the senior parents kind of sign up, or, you know, a way to allow, because it is their last opportunity, if you're a junior or sophomore, you will have opportunities next year to participate, you know, to, to view your child playing. So that, that is an option, is to kind of rotate the senior parents, so that they would all have a chance to see their child play for the last time.
So we're still evaluating it, and, you know, again, thanks for your input, and again, whatever the board would recommend, we can make work. So that's where we're at with this, and then I'll speak a little more about our outdoor spectator situation when we get into this fall and spring sports.
Just out of curiosity, where are the football teams going to play?
Since they want. On that in the next few slides.
In my mind, Kristin.
I'm sorry, jumped the gun.
Perfect.
I have it written down, too.
The fall athletics right now, it's actually the next slide. So again, it's a very odd time, because fall registration started this past Monday, but we can't have registration going on for two sports, so we're waiting till the winter finishes. So for those with children at the high school level playing a fall sport, registration will be, information will be sent out later this week. So fall registration will be opening soon, and will start at the high school level on March 1, and at the junior high level on March 22. Here is what our teams and primary facilities look like. So we will be relying on Bay Park a lot this year, and really for all sports. So we have our varsity JV and middle school programs be practicing at Bay Park. They are unable to play the games at Bay Park due to the location of the fencing. So for our varsity team, again, being, you know, a team which is, for many of them, be the last opportunity playing for East Rockaway, that we want to give them some home games. So we have a great relationship with Malvern School District, and they were more than happy to assist us with that. So we will be playing our home games at the varsity level, which will be three home games at this point at Malvern High School. Currently, Malvern is not having spectators, so it would not be something that we can have spectators, but then again, that's a month and a half away, so things can certainly change, and especially being an outdoor sport. Our JV and middle school football team, they'll again, have about two to three home games each. JV will have three home, they'll, they'll play all their games away this, this school year. And of course, that's never ideal, but again, the, the benefit is really in sight for these athletes with the facility that they're going to be playing off the next few years. So again, Bay Park would have been a great option for home games, but we are unable to play them there. Then of course, our soccer doesn't change, middle school girls' soccer, they'll probably have more away games this year than usual, but on Mondays, football typically will not be using the field at Bay Park, so they may be able to have some more girls' games there. And of course, volleyball, middle school cheerleading, and cross countries. This is how our fall season looks at this point. Okay, and then I'll move on to the spring, which is very similar. And again, we roll right into the spring season, apologize, that says fall, but that should say spring season, April 22nd, so one after the next. And then, of course, at the junior high, we have May 3rd. And you can see here, a similar situation now. JV baseball will be playing games at Bay Park, and they won't be going away, because typically schools have one baseball field, that's for the high school level. So it's not as if we can send both JV and varsity baseball away, they may not have the facility for two fields. So our JV baseball will be playing some games at Bay Park, junior high baseball will be primarily going away. Varsity and JV softball will likely use Rain Avenue. The facility is preferred by the high school coaches because of the pitching mound there and the rubber that they have there, as opposed to Bay Park. But Bay Park will still be an option if need be, or in case of inclement weather, and junior high softball will remain at Bay Park. For practice facilities, we're going to work with, you know, we have basically six programs for, you know, we have the baseball, we have three programs for one field. There are additional fields in Bay Park, as you all know, south, the grass fields. It is a little further away, though, it's almost three quarters of a mile further distance. So we're going to try to keep everybody in that turf facility. We will probably rely on using the softball field at times for our junior high baseball practice, and be flexible with that. So we've spoken with coaches, and we'll continue in that conversation to see what can work in this shortened season. And then everything else is basically the same. Of course, track and field, though, will be down at Bay Park as well. And, thank you. I really appreciate this and all of your support, we're really excited to get back at it. We're confident that it could be done safely. You know, my, my discussion with the parents is going to be, it's going to be all of us. It's not just the schools, it's not just the students, it's the parents and the community as well. Such an important piece to get the students back here, and to look at these boys and girls' basketball pitchers in the top corners, right? That, that was from March 8th last year, something along the, you know, around that time, and see a smile on everyone's faces, sort of not knowing what was coming down the line, you know, brings chills and brings excitement to get back into it. So, you know, we're confident it can be done safely. So, you know, we're confident it can be done safely. You know, we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that, first off, everyone's safe. And second off, that we can play, you know, those are really important things. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. But again, I, I really do appreciate all of your support.
Mr. Barth, is tip off night this Thursday?
So we, so I just spoke with the coaches today and it was incorrect date put out there, but we're going to probably likely change it because we haven't had tryouts yet. So again, for some of the programs that will be making roster reductions, we don't want to invite, we don't want to require that people attend and then may not participate on the team. So we are likely going to change it to Monday and that more information tomorrow morning will be sent out.
Thank you. That worked out well because there's a guidance college and career planning also.
Yeah. So that, so that will, that will be moved to likely Monday. And like I said, hopefully we'll have the rosters finalized by then.
Thank you.
Dave, do we have any interest in cheerleading?
So cheerleading for the competitive cheer?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the competitive cheer, we do, we do have interest. It's, it's lower than usual. A lot of our cheerleaders are full virtual at this point. So I don't know if the interest level of coming back into school has been there. Tomorrow's going to be a big day to tell. We have a number of students who are registered, but the first practice will really be the, the key.
Thank you.
Those, those dates, the start dates, are those hard dates where we start practice or is that when the games start? Like football, March 1st to April 22nd. That's like an eight week season. Are they allowed to practice prior to that? I don't know.
March 1 is their first official practice. So anything that happens before then is off, is considered off season work. And they'll need, they'll need their 10 practices prior to playing the game.
Sounds good. Looking forward to it.
Yes.
Me too.
Any other questions for Mr. Barth or about the spectator policy? Cause we, we really, you know, we, we were hoping that we could try something, but we also had the same reservations that were discussed here. So would we want to kind of go with a rotating signup for senior parents? Would that be fair and at least open it to those families to be present with a, with a maximum number?
I think Dave's got to look at the rosters first to make sure that the numbers of seniors, what he's got there for the boys and girls basketball to start off with. Because don't forget you have the volleyball season is going to follow. And I don't, you know, you, you hate to do for one and not do for the other. So I, I think if you establish it that you're going to have anybody in, you're gonna, it's a, it's a hard call. How do you call it? Volleyball's the next season down. So you don't even know what's trying out. You have a good idea from what could be coming back anyway. You know, I'm just trying to figure out the senior rotations, you know, to offer it that way. But I, I, I was curious though, you did mention before about coaches having concerns about parents being in there. Is that, that, that came out at one of the meetings, Dave?
Yeah, that came out of one of the meetings. Like I said, more of the, the idea that, you know, we waited 10 months to get here. And if there was a positive case and there was contact tracing done where a student or a student did actually come down with COVID and possibly traced back to having a spectator, then the 10 months of waiting is out of the window, out the window, as you know, it's such a short season. So that was, it was the risk reward type idea for the indoor sports. Now, you know, because there is even again, based on the number, we have to see what the roster looks like, but every student is going to have their own seat. So even if they're on the court, when they come out, they still need to have their own individual seat. So we're going to use the majority of the bleachers. So that was the concern. It's not as if they can be on the other side of the gym. That'd be a different story. They're going to be behind our students. So there are going to be restrictions if we did have fans, where they wouldn't be able to really leave their seat until, you know, halftime or until a timeout because we don't want interaction. So.
The one thing I, I just think that you, I think coaches have to understand, they're, they're going to walk into other districts and they're going to have parents there. And they're going to, you know, everybody's going to follow DOH of course, but they will have parents there. And then you're going to get a kickback and I hate to be in your seat at that point of the kickback day because you're going to have parents of ours saying, oh, wait a minute, we go to these other places, they get parents in there. We do have room to put some parents in here, you know, and, and it's a quagmire, you know, and you know, you sat through all meetings, you know how that goes. And that's why you notice I stayed silent tonight because of everything that has gone on in the meetings. But more so, I just want you to really think hard, you know, I, I, I think the board is here to back you as the athletic director. And, and I think that we all have that clear sense that we do want the best for our kids, but we want you to be comfortable in, in administrating this job. It's, it's a tough job. We're not a big, we're not a huge indoor facility. We do have a lot of limitations there. You did give a great coup to all the parents by making NFHS. Got that camera in here last year right away. You got it on sale. Plus now you made it free for everybody. You gave them a lot of amenities there, you know, to really, to, to say to the parents, you're doing the best you can. And, and I think you are, and I think we all do. So think real hard about it. I, I, I don't, Lisa, I don't know if this decision should go back to the board is what I'm trying to say. I think it's more so that the administrator of the program makes his recommendation to us and we back them. And I, and I think that's the way it should go. Be honest with you.
Thank you so much for that, Dom. I, I do think, you know, in speaking with David last week, the, the coaches did express concerns. And I do think they also are the ones that are there. They have a lot invested in us keeping this program running. And so I, I really believe, you know, David has collaborated, collaborated with them on, on, I think, every step of the way and moving forward with this. So I think maybe go back to your coaches and have a conversation and, and then let us know.
Definitely. Yes. Like I said, as Ms. Volpa said, you know, the volleyball season is right around the corner and then, and you know, we're going to look at it. And we have an idea of how many seniors each basketball team will have. So it will have a clearer view of it really on Saturday and as we look ahead. So I will certainly keep you in loop on that. And then that also brings discussion for something to keep in mind with the outdoor season. Will be at Bay Park, which of course is a public park, you know. So we want to make sure that we are staying within the guidelines, which is two spectators per student. But also having procedures that we can enforce, of course, you know, being a, a local park with a lot more space. So there may be differences between what's allowed indoors as well as what's allowed outdoors, just again, based on pure space.
You know, we do, there are a lot of, you know, there was a survey that went out to my colleagues across, let's see, Nassau County and most, I would say the majority of districts are not allowing spectators. There are some districts that are allowing only, you know, parents from, from the home team. So, you know, I do think that's also a consideration because parents are going to hear, oh, Lynbrook's allowing it, Malvern's allowing it. And so it kind of puts a little bit more pressure on that. So we can take a look at that. And David, I can give you that data to share with the coaches as well.
Yeah, we're going to look at all angles and if we can get people in, we certainly will.
Sounds great.
I want to thank the board for their support. You know, thank you so much. And Dom, thank you for all you're doing behind the scenes with your organization, because I know this has been a really crazy time for you. And I also want to thank David. He was invited to attend the press conference that Laura Curran had last week. And he said, they said, oh, you're just coming to be an observer. And then the microphone, he was thrust right in front of the microphone and asked quite a number of questions, but he did an outstanding job, thought on his feet and really represented our students, which is always should be at the heart of everything that we do. So David, thank you. I was impressed. I wouldn't have been so smooth had it been me. So thank you. I know this really was like, I always tell you, it's like a news dump on a Friday and you had one week to pull all this together. And I know you've been planning for it all along with fingers crossed, hoping that it would happen. So it's here. We want our kids to do, to have this opportunity. We know how important it is. David was asked that question about how, you know, how is the lack of extracurriculars and athletics affecting students? And we know that it's very, very important to their social and emotional wellbeing. And so much of the reason as to why our kids are successful in school is to have, you know, this facet of their education as well. So we're thrilled that it's going to go forward and we just wanted, we want to do it as David said safely. So thank you. Thanks, David.
Thanks, Mr. Barth.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll stop sharing my screen. There it is.
Thank you. David's going to stick around because he's going to be speaking a little bit at our budget, on the budget presentation as well. So that is scheduled to start at seven. I will make a suggestion, however, because this meeting is being recorded, it's not live. Because we are all in our own living rooms. And in order to make this live, it would put our, the, the meeting at risk for Zoom bombers. But Lee, can you just talk, would you mind talking a little bit about the new Zoom account? And so explain why, because we could probably go right into the budget presentation because this is not live. It's being recorded. It will be put up tonight on the website for people to see. So we don't really have to wait till seven, but Lee, can you just explain to the board about the new account that we're getting?
Sure. We added a Zoom webinar feature to our district Zoom accounts. And that will allow the board to be like a panel, will be the panel. And then we could have up to 100 attendees as just audience members. They could, if you, if we choose to set it up, we could poll the audience. We can open up like a Q and A kind of chat for them. So it will allow us to have a safe and secure meeting. We won't have to share the link on the website. That's when we encounter issues as you're aware. So it's a great feature. We ju, we ordered it last month. So, you know, it'll be ready to go at our next meeting if we need it. And it will make these sessions more like the Google Meet sessions in the beginning of the pandemic. Google Meet allowed us to livestream our Google Meet. But after the summer, they did away with that. So we purchased the Zoom room feature. It's called a webinar feature.
And of course, when we're all in the same room, we can livestream it. And that's what we normally do, but because we're all separated tonight in our own places, that's the reason for not being able to stream it live. So it will be made available. So we, I recommend it is the next item and David is here. So we could go right into that budget work session if that's okay with everyone. Okay. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Creo. Need to share her screen, Mr. Rouse.
Yeah, she's a co-host. I made her a co-host.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Is it being shared?
Um, not yet.
Oh, again.
I have the presentation. There you go.
Here we go. Here we go.
There you go.
Go. Okay. Okay, everybody can see it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, good evening and welcome to the second budget work session for the 2122 budget. Tonight, we're going to be going over quickly the tax cap levy update, go over the governor's budget proposal, our capital projects and technology. So right now our tax levy cap forecast last year was at 2.24 our cap. And the CPI has been set at 1.23, one of the lowest CPIs in the past several years. CPI is, is based on a calendar year. And so December CPI was set and this is the calendar year. And it is one of the only variables that is consistent across the state of New York. The tax levy cap is a complicated formula with multiple variables. Most of them are unique to each of the school districts, with the exception of the CPI cap. At the moment, we have most variables already determined. With the exception of our pilot, we still have some unanswered questions. But at this moment, it looks like our levy increase will be capped at 2.61%, which allows us to raise an additional $818,035 annually. So the governor's state aid proposal was announced on Tuesday, January 19th. And he gave our state aid runs. And based on the proposal for East Rockaway, and I always compare it to the state aid numbers that were adopted April 1st. We have a decrease in state aid of a little over $167,000, 167,806 to be exact. Now that is a decrease in state aid. It is about 2.24%, much lower than we had all feared. But it is in fact a decrease. So let's go over a few of the key points within the governor's proposal. His budget is proposed, assuming that New York State will receive $6 billion in what we refer to as the CRRSA stimulus funding, which stands for the federal coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriation. So C O R S A is much easier to say. If we don't receive the $6 billion, state aid is sure to decrease as we know the state does not have excess funds. The overall increase in the state budget for school aid is $2.1 billion from what the current levels are. But $3.8 billion of the federal CRRSA stimulus money is in the 2122 budget. Using all the stimulus funding in the upcoming budget does create what we consider a potential for a financial cliff in the 2223 school year if additional funding from the federal government, government is not granted and/or the state's economy does not approve. Right now, the state's budget has an overall decrease in funding for schools and that decreases is offset by the stimulus funds. Federal aid, foundation aid was flat for the second consecutive year at the 1920 levels. Last year it remained flat. They did not increase it. Last year, we also had a, a little bit of a reduction in the state's funding of school aid. And it was offset by the CARES stimulus funding from the federal government. And they froze foundation aid at the last moment. We're right back there again. It's frozen again for the second year in a row. This is kind of similar to what happened at the last fiscal crisis we had back in 2008, 2009, where we had funding removed, the GEA, everybody remembers was removed. It was backfilled by federal stimulus money. And then we spent years trying to get that funding back from the state. We were finally made whole a few years ago, and here we are right back in the same situation. We're hoping that does not continue. Now, we do not follow the same path, but we certainly do seem to be going in the same direction. Additionally, the state responsibility for our residentially placed students is eliminated. The 18.424 state share responsibility was frozen, shall I say, last year with an appeal date. It was ended April 1st, 2021. So it was supposed to be for only one year in which the school was to pick up the additional 18.424% of the state's portion. And so we had to pick it up April 1st, 2020, for the last couple of months of last school year. And it was supposed to end the third quarter of this year. Unfortunately, this, this budget proposal makes that permanent, meaning that school districts will now fund 56.848% of the residential placement costs and the state will no longer have their share. Again, the shared services aid is a new category in which he's collapsing 11 of our expense driven categories into one service aid category. This is not the first year. The governor makes this proposal many years in a row. He seems to be very fixated on this particular point. Collapsing these aids into one service aid is a, a bit of a complicated suggestion, so to say, because each aid has different aid ratios. He hasn't really given us any further details as to what he plans on doing. But in order to collapse it into one aid, it appears that he would probably be changing the method in which the aids are determined. Because there's no way you can use 11 different aid ratios and then collapse it into one service aid. The legislators have denied this, have not passed it for the last several years. And we're hoping that that in fact is what happens this year. Again, the budget has a plan in there. Should the stimulus not exceed the $6 billion that he's estimating? He would put a 5% permanent state aid reduction for the current school year, which would carry forward until next year. He plans on eliminating the prior year aid queue. That's a queue that has money in it. Everybody kind of sits in a queue. Any prior year expenses, adjustments maybe to your ST3, late filings of your stacks. Any prior year expenses, adjustments maybe to your ST3, late filings of your stacks for your special education students, all goes into this queue of money that they owe you. And then when the state has money, they, based on where you stand in the queue, the money is released. East Rockaway has $157,500 in that queue. We don't count on that money. It is not recorded anywhere as a receivable, but it is in fact $157,000 hit to the school district should he decide to eliminate that queue. In addition, he is proposing that we could no longer apply for prior year aid. So if we have any adjustments going forward, that would impact aid from prior years. Again, it could be a stack that was missed. It could be some incorrect filing in your ST3, your year-end filing. You would no longer be eligible for prior year aid. That is another one of his proposals. And again, he's talking about consolidating those expense-driven aids into a single block grant. Of course, we don't know exactly what that means at the moment. So that's the governor's proposal. Pretty much a lot of it is good news. A decrease of 2.24% is really very small. We can only hope that we get the the money that he has, the $6 billion that he has in his budget. And the decrease would be something that the district can certainly bear with and and still maintain our programs. So let's talk about capital projects and how they're funded. There's two different methods of funding capital projects. Our annual budget has money allocated in the operating budget for $300,000 for any small capital projects. This is something we've been worked very hard over the last several years to get inside the operating budget so that we can maintain our facilities on a regular basis and don't have to wait until things get to be a lot of needs and then we have to go out for a bond. So this allows us to address smaller projects on an annual basis and continue to maintain the facilities. The other method we have is a capital reserve. This is used to offset large capital projects that can't be addressed in our annual budget. We created our capital reserve back in May of 2014. We revised it in May of 2018. It had a term of 10 years. When it amount not exceed $7 million. $6.2 million of that was used to offset the 2019 approved bond. The other $800,000 was spent in the first few years of this capital reserve for some smaller capital projects. So how are capital projects determined? Well, we always focus on health and safety. We gather our information. We are required to have a school facilities five-year plan. That's done by the architect. We review that. We review the building visual inspection reports. We have committee discussions. We analyze it. We prioritize it. And then we coordinate projects. We do have a long list from when we had our facilities committee for the bond. And I, with Mr. Daly, we review that. We see what we can address each year and what's of the highest priority. And that's how we choose. Sometimes new things come up. But that is how we select the the capital projects annually. So these are the projects that we had selected for the current 2021 improvements. And last month, I gave you an update and things have changed. We've moved forward in many of the projects. Now that we seem to have everything running pretty smoothly in the school, facilities is now back to doing a little bit more outside projects besides just maintaining the cleaning and sanitizing of the facilities. Our staff has been utilized in many different ways since the pandemic. We've used our maintenance and our grounds crew for cleaning duties to assist with sanitizing and cleaning throughout the day to reduce our cost to the taxpayer because we did not want to spend additional funding to hire additional subs for the middle of the day. So now that we are starting to kind of level out, everybody's getting comfortable in their positions and in in their new duties, we were able to move forward on some of these projects. Our security upgrade is the visitor management system. So we've gone ahead and we have entered into an LLI. We've issued the purchase order and we are waiting on when we can meet with the project team to determine when that will begin. The painting for the auditorium ceiling in the high school and then the large gym, as well as the floor drains in the boys and girls lavatories at Center Avenue Avenue are all tentatively scheduled for the winter recess. Purchase orders have already been drawn and sent for electronic signs for both Center Avenue and Rain Avenue. And all of the classroom shades in Center Avenue that were ordered have been delivered and installed. As you can see up in the right-hand corner, I continue to tell the fact that we're able to do all of these capital improvement projects from the operating budget and not having to rely on bonds or reserve accounts. It's pretty important. It gives us the ability to save money towards the future for some larger projects. So what are we thinking about for the 2122 school year? So again, we always set aside money for security enhancements. It's one of our number one priorities in school district. And we maintain that is is health and safety of our students and our staff. So we will continue to upgrade cabling for our cameras to allow us to install high-definition cameras. Some of our cameras that we have are very old and the pictures are not really very clear. So we need to put the upgrade the cabling first before we can replace the cameras. So we'll continue to work on that throughout the district. We do want to install some 3M security film in some of our common areas and on our in in our classroom doors. We also have been in discussion about security fencing along the walkway at the front entrance of Rain. Right now, during the day, when visitors come to the front entrance, our students are out on the fields and the visitors are walking with direct access to our students. We feel that that is a bit of a security issue. So we have been working with the principal and with our security consultant and our security aides and come up with a plan to put some security, some fencing there. And a security guard will remain there by the entranceway to make sure that there's no access to our students. At the high school, we would like to add an additional oven. Right now, all of the cooking district-wide is done in the high school kitchen. We have one double oven. It is older. When that oven breaks, we have no oven to cook our hot food for the entire district. We do have the capacity to add an additional oven in the high school kitchen. We feel it would allow us to offer perhaps pizza on a more regular basis at our elementary schools. And it would also allow us to continue to serve hot foods should the older oven malfunction. So that is something we'd like to do next year as well. Center Avenue, we, the art room, we replaced all the casework that was in our capital projects two years ago. That was completed over the winter recess. And we are installing the kiln that we have and building an enclosure and install and installing the kiln in that art room. This is the floor replacement. It will complete that room. It will be a, they will be very proud of the entire project. So this would be just the final piece to completing the art room in Center Avenue. Another proposal that we have for this year is a large bus proposal. So right now, currently, the the district has four vehicles for student transportation. These are the four vehicles. You'll see three of our vehicles are 19, 18 or 19 years old. The last vehicle, vehicle number 11, that just, I'm just listing the vehicles as they're numbered on the actual vehicle itself is the one we bought three years ago. Vehicle one is only a 14-passenger. Vehicle two is our large bus. We only have one large bus. It is 18 years old. Vehicle three is the vehicle that we were having some difficulty with securing parts because of the age of the vehicle last year. So what I am proposing is that we purchase another large bus. Since we are utilize, actually moving forward with a lot of bond projects in the high school and in Center Avenue, this is the time to start to look at other areas in which capital improvements can be made. And our vehicles are getting very old. 19-year-old, 20-year-old vehicles are going to become unreliable and hard to replace parts when they break down. Right now, if our bus should break down, we do not have a second large vehicle. So I am proposing we purchase a new large bus so that we do have a second large vehicle and then taking vehicle three and surplusing it, taking it out of the vehicles. Then from there, I am going to hand this presentation over to Mr. Both, who's going to talk about the Rain Avenue school field upgrades that we have added as part of our capital projects for the upcoming school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Creo. So yeah, as well, no, Rain Avenue is really another viable option for our students and our athletes to really use in the in the school district. It's a large enough space to accommodate, of course, softball, but as well as other sports and activities. And of course, you know, our youth teams if needed and, you know, our phys ed program. So there's a lot of good opportunities on the Rain Avenue field and to be able to use some of the equipment that we already have at the high school to sort of enhance the facility. So Miss Creo, if you'd mind switching, you know, you're going to have to operate the slides.
No problem.
Perfect. Thank you. So here's some recent aesthetic aesthetic upgrades that we've done. These were purchased in November and they will be up come, you know, come the season. Just to really enhance the look of it when when driving by, when our athletes are playing there. Obviously, our main priority moving forward is going to be playing as many softball games at the the new facility. But obviously, with baseball being up there as well, and of course, JV and varsity, Rain is going to be a really viable option for our softball program and an option that I know the coaches do enjoy and do do think is a really good option. So it's going to be an option. And we want to make sure that it fits the mold of what we expect as a district. So just some aesthetic upgrades that we've done. We have backstop padding. We have windscreen. We got a field stencil. We have new guest and home signs that will be coming as well as a new East Rockaway softball sign. So just aesthetically, when guests, people see the field, it definitely has a cleaner look to it. Some things that we need, though, and Miss Creo, we have some needs and wants that we we have here. So we need a spectator seating area. Again, we've used a field for a number of years as a JV field for our softball program. And again, that will certainly be something that is relied on. But moving forward, having an additional place to seat spectators is going to be an important piece. Of course, while not, you know, getting in the way of the daily use that a Rain Avenue uses it for, to repair our dugouts and our backstops. Paint and repair softball dugouts and backstops to enhance the look and increase the longevity. Again, you know, when you look closely at backstops and dugouts, their their majority are chain-link fences. And that's, of course, what ours is right now. They can be repaired. And that would definitely increase the look and the longevity. So those are sort of the needs that we identify just specifically for the softball field. Some of the wants is upgrading our dugouts, really turning them into something that really shows off the facility. And that's one of the things that you'll see right away. And then moving some of the equipment that we already have in place. So the scoreboard, the soccer goal, and the batting cage, these are all things that we already have in the district. Our Daktronics baseball softball scoreboard that was on top of the tower i- is relatively new. It's in fantastic condition. It is wireless. The teams typically operated from their bench. So it's really something that can still be used and it's a high-quality scoreboard. So being able to move that to Rain Avenue and again, upgrade the facility for our softball teams would definitely be something that we would want to see. Another recommendation would be the soccer goal. We have our, obviously, our football uprights that are convert soccer goals as well. If we took off the top piece for the football upright, we'd be able to use the soccer goals again for our recess, for physical education, for the community, and if needed, for our athletics program. We would likely, you know, again, look to use one of the soccer goals just because of the spacing of the facility. But even having one there really opens up a number of different options. And then our batting cage. We'd love to see that moved and I told Miss Creo and Mr. Daly, if possible, for this year as a possibility for another additional place for our softball and even our baseball team to practice. Batting cage is so important for both of those sports, obviously containing the softball and baseballs that if we do have that option for even our baseball program, that would make it a viable practice facility when we do have a lot going on at Bay Park this year. So these are three items that we already have in the district that are still in good condition that by bringing down to Rain will some we can use this year, move forward. Our youth programs could possibly use it as well. And these are just some ideas that we discussed about options of where to locate it. We can see we have the two red areas as possible locations for the, I'm sorry, it says backstop, but it should say batting cage. And you see those two possible options over there, the one that is an alt house have. And then, of course, one at the entrance on Rain Avenue. The soccer goal would be orange and that'd be right near the Rain Avenue gym. And then the possible scoreboard, I spoke to Mr. Daly about me possibly on the school or in the corner where the current sign is right now. So these are all upgrades that, of course, will increase the aesthetics of the facility, functionality of the facility for our high school teams and even our youth teams. And then, of course, having the option for a soccer goal will provide another area for students in recess and physical education to play. So these are all areas that we certainly like to look into, see if it's possible for Rain Avenue facility and something that can definitely upgrade it in certain ways.
So we are taking all of this into account. We're going to be looking at some of the costs to move some of these items over, connect the scoreboard. We'll take some some doing. We'll probably need to go through the state for approval for that. And of course, we're going to need to look at the the field conditions. We understand and we know that there is a very high water table over there. And of course, we're going to put a lot of effort into all of our options to make sure that this could be a feasible, a feasible possibilities and alternative site. I know they do use it currently, but we'd like to bring it up to a higher level, especially now that we're improving our athletic complex over here in the high school. So this is another area that we are proposing. We use our capital funding for in the upcoming 2122 school year.
Jackie, I'd just like to interject. You mentioned something about the water table there. It really isn't the water table there. It's more so the fields all need to be graded there. So any of those conditions that Mrs. Both spoke about, and I agree 100%, I would put this money into that area. It needs it solely. But right now, before you do any of that stuff, that field has got to be upgraded. And and that's just a matter of bringing in one of the companies. When all guys do it, they do the best they can. And Jim will tell you, all right, they do the best they can. But right now, it is beaten up. So when you get a rain, it'll stick there for two weeks, you know, a lot of the puddles. What has to happen is that the whole field has to be graded. And just the right mixture of clay. Right now, it's totally clayed out. You need to have sand. You need to get that clay in there. You need to bring in, you know, a company. And Dave knows all the companies to bring in. But one of those companies need to be brought in first before you do anything else down there because it can't even be used for a week straight at at this point in time. And this spring, you're going to need another facility other than Bay Park because you're going to back up in games. So that's just one of the things I would do first before you do any one of those other things. I think they're all great. I think they all should be done. But if you don't get that field graded first and and really set up where it's got drainage to it, there's big problems of ever using any of that other stuff you're putting in there.
No, we are, Mr. Both and I have spoken about that. He's been very clear about that. I have spoken with Mr. Grillo about it. We, and that is why we are setting aside money within the capital budget. Because we do know there's going to be some costs to addressing. The fields themselves have to be addressed before we can really make this a feasible option. It's not a matter of just moving the equipment. No, but so I'm going to have to get proposals, which will be the next, our next step, getting proposals and seeing exactly what it is that we're going to need to make this field, bring this field to the condition in which not only do we fix it, but we can maintain it. You know, we don't want to just, you know, throw a bunch of dirt on it and then it rains and it can't be maintained. So we have to really make sure that we we do it right. And that's why we've set some money on the side for it. And this is a proposal that we're going to start to really pursue.
That's great.
Yeah, we're certainly not going to look into a turf field. That is something that was discussed with the facilities committee. But we certainly could look into a a a natural surface. So that is our goal. And we will keep everybody updated as we pursue that.
No, Ja- Jackie, just to, you know, go back, this will be at at a pretty hefty cost. And so hopefully, we can find funds for it. I know it was something that was looked at or discussed when we had the facilities committee for the, you know, in preparation for the bond. And you want to just update us where that stood? Because I think, you know, it was
Well, it was discussed with the facilities committee, but the discussion was about putting another turf field here, which the estimate was about a half a million dollars. And so it was determined that that was not something the district was looking to fund at the moment. We did not get a proposal at that time because that isn't really something you put in a bond project to redo the field. So again, I need to speak with Mr. Grillo. I need to get some more vendors in and get some estimates on what it would cost to, you know, improve the field. However, my initial conversation with Mr. Grillo, back when we had the facilities committee was that there was going to be to have drainage, that we were going to need to do borings, which were going to cost between $10,000 and $15,000. And that drainage would have to be put in to the fields because of the high water table. That was driving up the cost. But again, the overall project cost was over a half a million dollars and it was including a turf field. So now I will need to go back and get a little bit more information. Is drainage needed? Ju- you know, just what exactly do we need to do? I mean, I, I'm going to need to start to look into that because I can't really answer that until I start to get some estimates. But it is not going to be a matter of just moving equipment. It was definitely going to be improvements to the field that are going to have to be made. It's going to come at a price. You know, and whether it's not going to be done on this, in the spring because there's just not enough time. Any other questions? Okay. Okay. So let's talk about debt service. Debt services are principal and interest payments for bond projects. As we know, we've been talking for many years that our debt service is beginning to roll off. Hence why we went for the 2009 bond, 2019 bond, because we knew that the debt service was going to roll off. And now is the time to start to finance some additional bond work that the district needed. So we've already gone out in the next slide. I will show you where we stand with all of our bond projects. But we've already awarded a few projects, almost all of them, if they have not been approved by the state, they are up at the state waiting for approval with the exception of the Rain Avenue project. So work is going to be started. We expect to start work in the fields within the next month or two. And Center Avenue Masonary and HVAC will begin in the summer as well as the electrical work in the high school. So a lot of bond work is going to start within the next couple of months. So either late spring or early summer, and that all depends on when the approval from the, the state comes. I will be going out for a bond anticipation note to fund a portion of the bond projects. The borrowing will be set on a repayment schedule that will align with our expiring debt service. Therefore, there will be no tax impacted to the taxpayer. We are very committed to sticking to that promise that this bond would be no impact to our taxpayer. So the timing of the borrowing is very important, that it's aligned with the debt service that's rolling off and that the completion of our projects and the filing of all our reports is done properly and timely to make sure our state aid comes in to offset our debt service. So that is where we are with bonds.
Jackie, how are the rates right now for those bonds?
They're very, they're very low, very low, very favorable, but we are in the situation where we are really going to go out. He's thinking about 1% always, you know, and we're going to go out for probably a, but right now we're thinking about $5.9 million. We have 6.2 million in our reserve. So the 5.9 million should carry us through for the next year. We don't want to borrow too much too soon because unfortunately then we have to start to repay it. And we will not get the state aid until 18 months after the project is completed. So timing is really crucial as much as the rate is really low now. Unfortunately, the way it aligns with the state aid, taxpayers would end up ultimately paying higher taxes. So I am really being very careful and very prudent with the way we do the borrowing. I don't foresee the rates going up very quick. So we're hoping within another year, we'll be able to finalize our total borrowing.
Great.
We're in a really good situation. And as we know, our bids that we have been out for have all come in way below budget. We hope that trend continues. So far, we have the Center Avenue Masonary work that came in far below budget. We have the HVAC work. Two of the three contracts have already been awarded. The third contract was just opened on January 20th. It's being reviewed right now. And we're hoping that that project as, as well comes in below bid. The pricing for the turf field and the lighting has come in below our, our estimates as well. So so far, three projects, all three of them below what we estimated. So I'm really quite pleased with the way the bond process is going. And again, I'm not going to borrow it unless I need it. Makes no sense to borrow it. So we will borrow in stages as the money is, is needed. Here on the screen is all of our projects. You'll see the one, it's all, all the ones that are shaded are either up at the state. The plans are all done on all the ones that are shaded, they're up at the state for submit, for approval, or they've been approved. Up at the top three have already been approved. And I expect within the next two weeks, all of them will be awarded. The bottom two are Rain Avenue, and that is the last two projects that will be done at the end when everything else is completed. So we are really moving along. We're on time and on budget for sure. So we're doing good. Again, for those just who are watching, we do have a bond presentation by our project managers and our architect on the ninth that perhaps you'd like to tune in. You would get more information from them. Next, we're going to talk about our technology projects. We have two different ways, just like our capital projects of funding technology. We funded out of the general operating budget. This year we have $75,000 budgeted. My goal has been for the past several years to have it all within the operating budget. We developed a hardware technology replacement plan over the last two years. But we have not been able to support the entire hardware technology plan through the operating budget at this time. We do have a technology reserve that was created back in 2014 for a term of two years. We fund it annually at no more than $200,000 a year, a cap of $2 million. I'm going to let Leah Rose take over from here and he can discuss how his technology projects are.
Thank you, Mrs. Creo.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My favorite topic. So this is how we determine what technology projects we will pursue in the upcoming year. We spend a lot of time gathering information to identify the areas of need. Input from teachers and administrator, administrators is paramount. We also turn to our BOSI's NOC team to advise on needed upgrades. And every year we do need upgrades. Meeting with the technology committee, you know, pre-COVID was also very important. And we always refer to our technology replacement plan that we worked very hard on over the last two years. We analyze, we prioritize, and then we implement projects. Can you go to the next slide, Miss?
I'm sorry, I got, I lost track.
So the, the technology projects that we completed last year, in, in this school year, we replaced devices to enhance our one-to-one initiative. Due to COVID, we did purchase an additional 100 Chromebook devices in, I guess, September of 2020, we were able to have Chromebooks and expand the one-to-one initiative to include the fourth grade, which we thought was very important because those kids, those students were on hybrid learning. So we're able to give devices to those fourth graders through 12th graders. So we added a grade to our one-to-one initiative. We also needed to enhance our fleet of loner devices. We have a lot of extra devices now. So for families in K through three who needed devices in the home, we made sure that they had them. So if we had to pivot to remote learning, they would be taken care of. We also pride ourselves in being able to give our students loner devices. So if our, our Chromebook it needs repair, they drop it off at the high school. We have a, a great deal with Dell where we put it in a box and we mail it away and it's back within 48 hours. But the student, the learning continues because they get a loner device. So that was important for us as well. We continue to replace our interactive whiteboards. So you'll notice now that most of the white, what, what, most of the boards in the classrooms are now, are new line boards, the newer smart boards, people call them smart boards, but we're phasing our antiquated smart boards out and replacing them with the new, new line boards. This year, last year, we also did a firewall upgrade using our E-rate money, which we'll talk about later. We were able to enhance our filtering security and help us get set for our Azure cloud-based backup, which has been put into place. The technology reserves proposal, so every year we put another proposal into our budget. As Mrs. Creo mentioned, we were trying to lower this incrementally each year. So we have more technology replacement funding built into our budget. So this year, we, I guess it was dropped down to 170,000 from 175,000 last year. If, am I correct about that, Miss Creo?
No, it's remained flat.
Oh, it's remained flat, okay. And we want to replace and add devices by purchasing another 300 Chromebooks for the upcoming school year. We would like to expand the one-to-one initiative to include third grade as we had initially planned with our return to learn plan. And then our seniors will have brand new Chromebooks in this coming year too. So we're proud to say that grades three through 12 will be completely, we're going to be a completely Chromebook district. As I've said before many times, the Chromebooks are severe, superior devices to the latitude, Windows-based laptops that our current 11th and 12th graders have. So for the next school year, Chromebooks for everyone, third, third through 12th grade. So these are the computer upgrades we're doing within our budget. We're replacing the lab workstations at Center and Rain. Each computer lab has 30 workstations, so we're replacing those. They are now in year eight. So next year would be year nine. They need to be replaced. We, we're entering into a five-year agreement with NASA BOSI. So it's a lease agreement. We're also hoping to replace the, or add the Apple MacBooks in, at the, in the high school art program. So it's due to financial constraints, we can't do a whole entire class of Macs, but we're doing five a year for four years to give a class of 20 brand-new Apple MacBooks. This is an overview of our hardware replacement plan. You can see that in 2018, 2019, we replaced our instructional computers. Those are the computers that are in the classrooms. We call them the teacher computers. The year after, in 1920, we replaced the administrator computers. The labs are coming in next year, 21, 22. I mentioned the Apple computers for the four-year phase-in plan, five a year to get to 20. Student Chromebooks on the four-year cycle, 300 a year allows us to continue with that. And the smart boards where our goal is to replace 15 per year. Luckily, that money comes from Smart Schools Bond Fund. That's federal money, I believe, or is it state money? I'm sorry, Jackie, I could be wrong on that. Is it state money, the Smart Schools?
Yes. And it's, and it's, it's money we got several years ago and we have been allocating it a little each year to replace the smart boards over the next several years.
So that reduces the impact on the budget because we're using that state smart.
Our, our, our goal was to try and you see, we have it expanded over seven years. We were hoping sooner. But our goal is to try to build that money to replace the 15 per year into, start to build it into the budget. So it gives us a little, a little bit of time to build that amount of money into the budget going forward. We know it's coming and we're preparing for it. Okay.
I look at this picture, just wait, go back to that.
Oh, I don't know how to go backwards.
Don't worry about it. I was going to say, it, it, it's pre-COVID. You see students working closely together without masks. There we go, working in groups. I am, I'm looking forward to going back to those days.
I love that picture. We use that all the time.
I know.
I know. He's just everywhere.
It's our BOSI image. We have to. It's a great, it's a great image. He gets a residual fee every time. So one of the exciting opportunities we go, we take advantage of every year is E-rate funding. The district has allocated a certain amount of fund from the, through the E-rate program. It's a federal grant program and every year we propose the project. This year, the switches at the high school need to be replaced. We have 11 switches. And just as a little background, switches are the key building blocks of any network. They connect all the devices, computers, wireless access points, printers, and they allow everything to kind of communicate with each other within, within the building. So they're, they're nearing the end of life. I believe they're in year nine. So next year would be year 10 and they need to be replaced. So the project to replace the 11 switches at the high school and the cabling that will go with it, the total cost of the project is $82,252. The great thing about E-rate is that we get reimbursed at a 50% rate. So 50% of that money is covered by the federal government. $41,126 is what we have to outlay in the next year. The great thing about this is we can now use BOSI's generated aid because BOSI's will be doing this project for us. And they give us a 67% outlay rate. So basically for an $82,000 project, the district, the net cost of the district is $13,572. And as Mrs. Creo likes to say, that's a win-win, right? When you have an $80,000 project and you're paying $13,000 out of pocket, that's a win for the district and it represents $68,680 of savings.
Next work session is scheduled for March 9th. And now we are going to be reviewing our transportation, salaries, the fringe benefits, our equipment codes, our contractual expenditures, our supplies, textbooks, workbooks and our BOSI's as well as the three-part budget. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Jackie. It was a great presentation. And thank you for our presenters tonight. You know, keeping us informed of every step of the way, especially in these kinds of times that we're facing. So again, a great reassurance that financially the job is being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. And you also saw in the update that we also received a good rating from our fiscal, help me out here, Jackie, the fiscal.
The Office of the State Control is our fiscal, oh, I forgot too now.
It's a fiscal rating and.
It's our fiscal stress. It's our fiscal stress indicator. Yes.
Right. And we received an excellent rating again this year. So thank you to Jackie for her leadership with our finances. So, okay, we do have a, still have a number of items to go. So if you have no other questions about the budget or the fields or the technology part of the budget, we'll move on. And David, if you do need to sign off, you're welcome to stay, but it's totally up to you. I thank you so much for both, for your effort in both areas and for working with us on the improvements to the field. I'm going to ask Mona to speak a little bit about return to school planning. As you know, we, you know, the, this is a fluid and ever-changing landscape with COVID. I listen very closely to the news, as I know we all do, especially during this time, because the information changes very rapidly. And I just want to give a little background before I do turn it over to Mona. You know, when, when the fall, when we were in the fall and things were going well, we never thought that we would make it all the way through the fall and things were going great. We had received requests, and we also had evaluated whether or not we could consider bringing more elementary students back on a daily basis, and we started to look at that. And then the holiday season hit, Thanksgiving hit, and there was a big increase. And then we knew that the medical field had anticipated that there would be another sharp increase at the holiday recess, which there was, and it was a little bit scary. In January, we had cases almost every single day. Now, as you know, we're reporting them much less frequently, and so the positivity rate on Long Island has gone down. We are facing, however, these other strains of the virus, so we need to remain very cautious. These viruses, the other strains are now, have been detected on Long Island. And the most dangerous one, the South African strain is now in the U.S., although I haven't heard that it's here in the New York area. So we do need to continue to be vigilant. We don't want to make any decisions that are going to put our students and faculty in jeopardy. We do consult with our teachers. They're the ones on the front lines. And so we have to make really prudent and well-thought-out decisions. I recently heard and then heard that the CDC is reversing it a little bit. As we know, schools are the safest place. There doesn't seem to be a lot of transmission occurring in schools. There is data to prove that. However, when I heard the new director of the CDC speak on last Thursday, she spoke about the need to keep population density low in schools and that when classes are very crowded, it's more likely with, the more students in a classroom, the more likely the transmission will spread, and the more close contacts will be determined once we, you know, in the event that there is a, a case. And so with our kids being really spread out, we've been able to do a lot of contact tracing, and we've been able to keep the number of students who have to quar, and staff who have to quarantine at a minimum, which is really great for, because kids can be in school, faculty can be in school, but also it's difficult when a family member has to quarantine because you could be putting everyone else in your family at risk as well. So with that said, we will, we are continuing to do, to look at this ongoing, but I'll let Mona speak to where we're at right at this moment and where we're going.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ruiz. You know, we are starting the second semester at the junior senior high school this week, and this is the time period that we gave all of our families for those students who were remote learning, fully remote learning to return. And we have a handful of students who are returning back now. So that's another, you know, moving part that we're going to be continuing to monitor. But we did, over the December, over the holiday break, we did announce that at Century Avenue, we were able to, starting in the new year, we were able to collapse and combine, I should say, two classes, one in second grade and one in third grade. The reasons for that were the, one third-grade class was able to fit well into the library. It's a large space. We were able to move the smart board. We were able to rearrange the desks. And by looking very closely, as we continue to do at the spacing requirements, we were able to do that. And we, you know, that's our goal, of course. You know, we know all of our K-three students are in the building, but some of those classes are split, and it's, you know, challenging for the teacher. It's challenging for the students. So we, of course, want them to be together, you know, as quickly as possible. We were able to do it with that classroom. We were also able to do it with the second-grade class because of one room that was large enough, and the enrollment in a particular, in that section was small enough that it worked out well. We have literally looked at the spacings of every desk. Mrs. Creo and Mr. Daly have done that. I did it with them for some of the classrooms. So, you know, we really moved everything and continue to try to see what is possible and continue to monitor, as was said, you know, the different, you know, week by week, what the numbers look like and what the guidance is. But we know that some of the districts surrounding us have been able to bring more students back in, in closer quarters, and those schools and districts many times have closed many more times than we have had to do. So, you know, we know what we're doing is working, and, you know, it's that balance. Of course, you know, the priority is health and safety, but the academic experience and opportunities are also paramount. So, you know, it's really balancing those things. So right now, Center and Rame both have all of their kindergartens in, and they both have another grade fully. And so Center, for example, it's first grade, all students in the classrooms, not split. And at Rame, it's third grade, all students in the classrooms, not split. And then in each building, they have some in first and second and third at Center or first and second at Rame. So again, we, we closely monitor it. March first is really our date for reassessing, and we're going to go through the month of February, see where we are with the cases and the numbers and what the landscape looks like, and continue to try to bring more students together in our buildings, and then ultimately for the older grades, back when we can do that safely. But right now, you know, again, we're monitoring the surrounding situation. And we're also monitoring what's happening in our buildings. So as we enter the second semester of instruction and also the return of some of our students, we'll continue to keep a close eye on that and do the best we can to make it happen when it can happen safely. We will be, just to add on, we will be, I will be convening the instruction committee that worked all summer to plan our reentry, and we will be talking very closely and often with our teachers about, you know, their feelings, their experiences, and, you know, get input and feedback from them, and then also speak with the committee at large to continue to monitor and assess and make recommendations.
The vaccine is going to play a huge role in this. When more and more people are vaccinated, you know, obviously, children are not being vaccinated. But when the teachers and support staff are vaccinated, I think people will feel more comfortable. We know that will be ninety-five percent effective, will be protected. But people are struggling, as you all know, to find appointments. So we're hoping that soon more appointments will become available. We're going to talk a little bit about COVID testing. I think that's the next item. Yeah, so why don't I, does anybody have any questions about our returning, returning more students? You know, the next phase would be to collapse the classes in K-three that are not, and also to consider moving four, five, and six. But I will share with you now, we know those, the kids are bigger, the rooms are not. And so it's difficult. It's still a challenge. We would need to order additional barriers, which we certainly can do and would be committed to doing so. But understanding that when those students are, you know, the density in that classroom is greater, it does create an increased risk. And so, you know, that is something we have to weigh as to what, what's more important. Because the Department of Health does not consider the barriers a mitigating factor. And so barriers are just not considered when we contact trace. I know I've said that before. So we are, we did receive, as I said, two hundred and forty tests from the Department of Health. We are hoping to use some of those for optional student testing. We're going to discuss that further this week and see what the plan would be, how we would roll that out, evaluate how many families are interested. There are a number of districts that are doing mandatory testing, and there are some that are not. So, you know, in terms of athletics. And so the, the feeling was, and I will, Mr. Barth and Mr. Volpus brought this up, is that, you know, you don't want the perception to be that the athletes are more important to be tested than all of the other students. And so I understand the athletes are going to be in much more closer contact with one another, but that's just not always the case. The kids who are athletes are then going back into the classrooms. And so we would like to try and offer optional testing to the families that are interested in it. I, I don't, I just don't know if we're going to be able to get more tests. It, it's very different in Suffolk, what Suffolk County is doing. They received hundreds of tests each school district, and they received the adequate number of tests. Whoops. To, I'm sorry. To, to test all of their athletes on a weekly basis, because that's what the county decided. We, beginning on Friday, we will have baseline health in the district. They have a mobile testing unit, and they will be present, but they, they do not test students. They currently are going to be available to test faculty and staff optionally, if anyone is interested in getting a test, just because they want reassurances, because we know that many people are completely asymptomatic. And so as per CDC guidelines, get tested, get tested often. We're making that available. However, this company does not get involved in student testing. We worked with, we contacted another company called Advanced Cardiovascular, and they will be coming into the district on February tenth. That's next Wednesday. And they will be developing a regular schedule with us, and they will be able to test students. So that will be something that we can roll out. And I will be, they're coming on campus to look at the site because they do not have a mobile unit. They actually need a room. So we've identified an area. They do this very quickly. They have it down to science. I spoke to the doctor who is in, who owns the company, is very affable, personable, and interested in working with us. And he also told me that they are approved, I believe, as a, to administer the vaccine when more of them become available. So that will be great to have available for our faculty and staff if that does come to pass. So we're hoping that that is the case, and then students could sign up. They would be on, on site once a week, and that is what they do. So people would have to sign up on the day that, you know, in advance for the day that they're here. And they reassure me the testing goes very, very quickly. The, the longest part is getting the insurance information. And if, if someone does not have insurance, they will bill through the CARES Act. But they would require a social security number of the person. If for some reason the student does not have that, then we, the district would be able to cover the cost for that. So that's where we stand now. I will be speaking with Mr. Barth and the nurses tomorrow. We have a meeting, so we actually, maybe it's not tomorrow, this week, to discuss how we would roll it out, because we do have these tests, these two hundred forty tests, but they will go quickly. So any questions on that? Okay, okay. We, I sent you home a copy of the district calendar, the draft district calendar for next year. Hopefully, you had a chance to look at it. We shared this with the ERTA as well as the administrators, and this appears to be the calendar that is, works, works for everyone. We would like to, we are proposing that we add an additional superintendent's conference day. I'm going to share my screen so you could see it. An additional superintendent's conference day here on August thirty-first because we're hoping that things will go back to normal. But obviously, we know in a post-COVID world, and I'm pleased to say there's been a lot of literature. I'm attending a conference next week about planning for the return to normalcy because there are a lot of considerations that we have to keep in mind, returning all of our students. We will have a pep rally. We absolutely will. But we have to consider the social emotional needs, the academic needs, and, and teachers and staff will need to be trained for that. So we're looking at, again, two days, which would be the thirty-first, and then the first. Students would come in on the second and the third. There's a long holiday. The Rosh Hashanah comes back-to-back with Labor Day. I won't go through every holiday, but the, there is a new holiday in the calendar. The governor has declared Juneteenth a state holiday for federal, for, I'm sorry, all state employees and school districts. Since it falls on a Sunday in June twenty-twenty-two, it will be observed on the twentieth. That is a Monday, and so schools will be closed then. We, if we add the one superintendent's conference day on the thirty-first, the twenty-second then would be a holiday, an additional vacation day that we would add to make the, the hall, you know, the winter break a little bit longer. And the rest of the calendar is pretty simple. So does anybody have any questions?
I just had a quick question about that, the twenty-second. So that wouldn't be like the furlough day that I know that Rockwell Center does right before. They, they do, basically, they get the day off and don't get paid. It's still, it's a holiday, right?
Yeah, that's in their contract, right? This would be, yeah, no, we don't have that. We have a hundred eighty-two days, so we have, we do have one of the smaller number of days in, you know, in the county and on Long Island. Many districts have one eighty-four, one eighty-five. I think one even is one eighty-six. And so, you know, that's why our vacations would be a little bit longer than others. I put it in red because, you know, generally, we don't have, we only have three conference days in our contract. And in general, that's what we observe, but we are asking for the fourth one this year. So we would still meet the hundred eighty-two days. There would be a hundred and seventy-eight student days and four conference days. And that would require that, I have it in red because it's pending the board's approval of that additional conference day.
I think it looks great.
Take care of everything we need.
Okay. Any other questions? So if there's no questions, then it will be an agenda item on Tuesday's agenda for the board to adopt the calendar for next year, and then we get that up on the website and start planning. Next item is rock rivalry update. Now, I did put this all in the, in the update. So it gave you kind of an outline as to what the high school is planning. Mr. Schaefer has been busy meeting with the advisors, the grade advisors and coordinator to make sure that rock rivalry does take place. So there are a number of events. Of course, they're going to be modified because of COVID. And we don't really expect anything to change in March. And to be honest with you, you know, I don't know if anything would change by, you know, May, either if we were to postpone it, if we had some good news or some predictions on the horizon for that to happen, we certainly could delay rock rivalry till later in the year. And, you know, we can consider doing that, but I think the feeling is, is that, that probably, you know, waiting will probably not change very much. So did you want me to go through it or?
No. I think it was a good explanation.
Yeah, I think it's definitely, I don't know that go, going or holding off until May would be a great idea only because then it, it doesn't look like AP exams will be canceled. So this, you're still going to have those at the end, even if Regents exams are. So I think that, you know, keeping it where it is would probably be best. And if we can have something big for the kids later in the spring, that would be great.
Yeah, the, the buildings are, are planning and doing a number of events now. We spoke with the PTA to discuss some additional family events, and the principals are working on, and the grade level, the, I'm sorry, the grade advisors are working on, you know, different fun events for the kids. They've had a number of them, a number of fundraisers. Advisory has had a scavenger hunt, so they're doing a lot of different things that are enjoyable and fun for the kids, even though they're, they're different from what we traditionally have done. And of course, you know, all of the senior events are being planned as good as or better than what they did last year in COVID. And they were very creative. I think, I think it was a lot. And they were very creative. I think, I think it was a lot of fun, the great things that, that the advisors planned. And I know they're working on that for our seniors now as well. And we are starting to talk about graduation. Obviously, we can't, will not be able to have it on the field, but we are looking at outdoor venues where we can hopefully do something similar to what we did last year, providing things stay the way, you know, the regulations stay the way they were, possibly even do one large outdoor graduation. But right now, the regulations are what they, what they were. And so, but we'll, we'll keep an eye on that. And we do have last year's model to follow, which I thought was beautiful. We got super feedback from that, the graduation, and we hope that it will be as beautiful as that was. So they are working hard and being very creative. You have to be these days. The parent coordinator position, I'm going to ask Mona to speak a little bit about that.
Okay. So we added the parent coordinator position a couple of years ago, and we have had two people in that role, and right now it is vacant. The, just a little bit of a history about it. The, the role came as an outgrowth of our family engagement committee. We had subcommittees that looked very closely at, you know, research surrounding family engagement and, you know, our district's commitment to ensuring that all families, you know, are connected to our schools. And one of the most important things that we recognize is that we want to make sure that families have opportunities to really engage and, and even have a voice in, you know, the activities in the schools and their children's education, and how impactful that is on student success, on student attendance, on student opportunities, on student success in school, as well as, you know, even beyond and preparation for beyond. So again, each of the subcommittees did recommend a parent coordinator that the district, you know, look to creating that position, which of course we did. Our goal was to really advance the work of our buildings and not just encourage families to come out to activities, because certainly for, you know, our concerts, our athletic events, rock rivalry, you know, there's, you know, tremendous community support and participation. But there are also, you know, other opportunities that we want to make sure families had the information about, that they received and understood, you know, what opportunities existed and, and really had a chance to become involved and engaged. And, you know, that, you know, the opportunities to do that are, you know, really widespread. And so the role of the, the position, you know, was kind of evolving and was being created as, as we went. And the first person, you know, who took the position was very much an early childhood person and got involved with some of our early transition activities. But at this point, you know, we, again, the position is open. We've had conversations in the district about it. We've had conversations with PTA leadership about it. And, you know, right now, you know, I think we're kind of in flux about where the next steps are. So I'm going to turn it back over to Mrs. Ruiz, and she can talk maybe a little bit more about that.
Yes. I, I apologize. I just got distracted because I got a text from Senator Kaminsky's office with a link for a vaccine distribution center that's just for school personnel. And that's open tomorrow. I'm trying to send it out to the faculty so they could sign up.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, you know. That was, that was Haley Myers who called me during the meeting. I didn't, I couldn't pick up, so she texted the link. So those teachers who are administrator, educators who are here, you can sign up too, but it's, it's open tomorrow in Westbury at a site, and it's supposedly just for teachers. So what was I going to speak about, Mrs.?
I'm just saying, we, we, we had had discussions in district, and we've discussed it with the PTA leadership. And I said, the position, you know, obviously is vacant right now, and the future of it is in flux. So that's why I was turning it over to you.
Yeah, thank you. And I think, you know, we, what Mona said is absolutely correct. And, you know, the origin, originally, the position was created to engage parents who are less engaged. So it wasn't a position created to take over the PTA or to replace the PTA or to engage the parents who are already active members in our school district. You know, we know that, just to refresh everyone's memory, we did an engage every family committee for two years. We read a text. And we learned a lot about how important family engagement is. It's, we know that parents who are engaged in their child's education do better. But we know that some families are not engaged for whatever various reasons there are. And so the point of this position was really to reach out to those families who are not involved, who don't come to parent-teacher conferences, who are not, don't feel comfortable coming into the school for events, and really to build and bridge the gap between those families and the school district. It's a hard position because, you know, you have to have the right person, and, you know, people have to utilize it effectively. And I think we have engaged more families. I think because of our principals have made much greater efforts over the last couple of years to reach out. We use a lot of social media. So I think we, we have done a great job of that, and we have increased family engagement. So we were thinking that at this point, we would not recommend that we, we hire for that position. We also have the new registrar, and we were hoping that that person can serve in that capacity. So we're hoping, we're, we're not recommending that we move forward with a rehire for that position at this time. So does anybody have any questions? And I apologize for being distracted. I have to go back to my email now. We have to get that out. I don't want anybody taking our teachers' places on the vaccines. I'm kidding. Okay, so I think that was our last item on the work session agenda, and we do have items to go back into post-exec. So does anybody have any other questions? Mr. Volpus, you're, we're good to.
We are good to go. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you, everyone. So I will see you in exec. You can use the same link from exec before to re-enter. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr..